Okay, it is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting of the North Adam City Finance Committee to a quarter. Attendance, Council Blackman?
Here.
Council Fitch?
Here.
Council Shade, here. Paul Presson, we have a call, and I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Maxie.
Good evening, thank you everyone for reconvening. If it is okay with the Finance Committee, I'd like to do the Veterans Office followed by the Library, and then if the staff so chooses, you're welcome to stay, or you can depart for the evening, and then we'll go into all of the rest of the budget, which is mostly Tim Lascarbo's supervised areas, if that's okay.
No objection?
Okay.
No, no objection.
So we'll start on page 11, line 643, and if at any point you can't hear me, just let me know, sometimes as I speak my voice slows down, so I'll try my best to use my outside voice. So on line 643, we will start with the Veterans Services Office. I'd like to welcome Curtis to our first budget, so welcome, and we hope to have you here for many, many more. But with that, under line 644 is the salary for Curtis. That includes a step increase and the increase of the 3% through the compensation plan. Then the next, the Assistance Benefit Agent, who was recently honored as a Community Hero from I Berkshers, is getting a 3% raise. And then, nothing really changes until we get down to line 657, Veterans Benefits, and that is just a true accounting change for our payrolls, for our benefits that we're granting to veterans. So we've, you know, unfortunately have lost in trending the payroll. So that is basically the quick abbreviated version of Veteran Services. Any, I'm sorry, that's your question, I was gonna say, any questions on Veteran Services?
Do we have any questions from the council members? Council Blackman?
I realize that the Assistant has been here quite a while, and the Director is new, but the difference in those two salaries is pretty small. It seems like maybe next year when we're looking at grades, we might want to look at the District Director.
Yes, I will make a note of that.
The other thing is, to clarify more for the public, this position, we get reimbursed for the other services offered to other communities, so we're not inheriting, we're not eating, is this our cost?
No, that's the full, that's the full salary.
Okay, so then the sum goes into?
Yes.
Miss Lane's receipt.
The local receipts under the Public Service Department, there's a line for veterans. So the other communities, Clarksville, Florida, Adams, Williams Sound, Lanesboro.
Cheshire.
Cheshire, and we, Dalton is, God joined another district, so we divvy up all of the salaries according to census numbers, and then we bill them every July 1st.
And that includes any pension liability?
Yep.
Where all, anything that they're?
We're all in.
I just, that's more for the people out there that might not be familiar with the Veterans Office.
Council Fitch?
Yeah, I'm just surprised, pleasantly surprised, that there's not an increase in the cost of supplies. This is gonna, this will suffice however?
Yeah, so for me, it's, again, it's my first year, and so I'm keeping a tracker of kind of how we're facilitating supplies throughout the year, but yeah, I firmly believe that this will suffice for the year.
Nice, good stuff.
I have a question on under Flags and Supplies again, you know, FY '24 ledgers was almost 13,000 spent, whereas now we're at 5,500. Do we know what, what was spent in the past, the current fiscal year?
In the current fiscal year?
Yeah.
I'm handing that to you, that's my report. Line 5430.
Also, it's because we're charging other towns for the flags now, and we made different arrangements for it, so that's the reason I believe that.
And in fiscal year '24, we bought a lot of the new stands.
Okay.
Let me just see, do we have, only for flags, I was wondering. 5430. Yeah, that's it.
Just a reminder, everyone, please speak loudly.
So we have a remaining balance of close to $4,000.
Yeah.
So?
So we're doing okay, this year we are charging the other towns for any flags that they have for their towns, and they've been great about reimbursing us, and we're only paying for, making sure we pay for, you know, our flags, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have more than half a day in this budget?
Yeah, I know it looked like that in that prior year, but no, we're good this year, and I think we'll be just fine with a 55.
And then something to mention on that too, the grave flags that we use, those are also reimbursed at a 75%, just as the benefits are. But the ones on the big flag pools are not, those are costs to the city.
What did you say, nine months later?
Nine months.
Thank you. And do we have any flags that need to be replaced, or are all of our flags in good shape?
They got all replaced right before Memorial Day.
Excellent.
It all depends on the wind.
Very true.
Yeah.
Wind and rain and?
Rain, rain.
Nails.
Do we have any other questions from the council members? Any questions from the gallery?
Just to clarify, the Veterans Benefits, do we still get most of that reimbursed, and is it the same percentage, or is this the cost we're paying?
So it's a reimbursement of 75%, the city pays 25% of that. So the, the costs are upfront, and then the reimbursement obviously is, is on the backside.
I believe it's been that way for a while.
It has.
So when people do see that, just same thing as Council Blackman was saying, is we do get reimbursed for much of that.
And it comes in as it's secured as a receivable. On the other.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
Hey Curtis, you're welcome to go or stay with us, whatever you prefer.
I'll hang out for a bit.
Okay, great.
Awesome, thank you.
So next on our list is the Library, that's page 10, line 585. Veronica, thank you so much for joining us. As I mentioned last night, we are really just sticking to the budget, but I'm going to invite Veronica back at a later time to talk about all the fun stuff that's going on in the Library. So basically, a summary of salaries, salaries are adjusted to the 3% and any step increases where necessary. We do have the line that is 591, I just want to point that out, that that is for three people. So those are three Librarians ones that are in that line, no one is making 124,000 at the Library. In addition, under expenses, Veronica runs a really great operation up there, and like everything else, supplies costs have gone up, and there was a request, a meeting request for, you know, audiobooks, general library, library materials for the youth, electronic resources. So while she does as much as she can, she does a great job at monitoring her budget, and those increases are just reflective around operating costs and needs of the Library. So this year, it's a pretty simple budget for the Library, most of the increase is driven by salary increases and the deserving step increases of the staff.
Any questions from committee members? I do have a question. I see the, the media line, and FY '24 didn't spend the full budget, how much has been spent so far this year?
We're at 85%, maybe I checked last week.
85%?
And we've got some outstanding stuff, problem was, there wasn't a whole lot that released last year, media wise, the movies kind of sucked.
So when you're talking, when you're talking about media, you mostly mean movies?
Movies and CDs, audio CDs.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but the movies sucked last year, so this year we're adding more TV series, people have been looking for classics and stuff like that, so we're spending it a little more rapidly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from members?
So, everybody.
Yes, Council Blackman?
Are we still doing the passes, where we have passes to Moca, the Clark, I don't know what else?
Moca, the Clark, we've got the Naples Submarine thing, I think they got the basketball museum down in Springfield, Ryan just updated them, because the friends do pay for those passes, and I haven't memorized all of the new ones yet, but we have three for Moca, four for the Clark, which are the two most popular ones. One of the Mocas is reserved for residents only, so that they always have an opportunity to get one.
I guess that would be when we have a, when we have an update of what's going on there, getting that list of what we have, and if there's other things that maybe we think we should be adding. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from committee members? Questions from the audience?
Yeah, I just want to compliment them, the programming has definitely been enhanced, you know, you see them doing a lot, a lot more than just what people think a library does. I do know, recently at one of our committee meetings, we actually held it at the Library, and the staff there gave a great presentation of all their updates and everything they were doing, so I do appreciate that. But as for those programs that they're doing, is there an expense for that, and like, where would that specifically fall in on these line items? Or is that on grant based?
It does not, it's front space.
Okay.
The Friends of the Library.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the book sale, if you go to the book sale, you're supporting those programs.
I'm just curious, what does that bring in?
The book sale, I think last year it was like $9,000 or something?
Okay, great, thank you.
When you start taking donations?
We're taking them now.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other questions on the Library?
Yes, one more thing, am I correct in assuming that library maintenance is categorized in a whole other section, like general building maintenance?
Building maintenance, yes.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions? I will ask one more question, since maintenance was brought up, how are we doing with the maintenance of the Library?
We're doing very good, yeah. The Bell Ditter has been on high focus, and as we all know, last week y'all approved the short-term policy, so we're gonna move forward with that, so I'm excited. We're just trying to figure out how to weedle our summer time programs to avoid scaffolding.
Excellent.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none?
Veronica, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you to your staff.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're welcome to stay, or go, whatever you prefer, we'll see you next week.
I got baby stories coming in.
I was gonna do that, I'll try to get what we could, to Sandy's side.
Oh, Sandy's in here, okay.
Okay, so we are going to go to page 9, and we'll be in order now, line 487, which is the Public Service Administration line. So as I mentioned while we were talking about the compensation plan, the Commissioner, which is Tim Lascarbo, the Assistant Superintendent Paul Markland, all received a 3% increase, plus their salary was adjusted to reflect pay of 40 hours. Both of these positions, for several years, have been paid 37 and a half when they do indeed work 40 hours. Their crew is out and scheduled for 40 hours, so obviously needs to be supervised for 40 hours. So while you see a big increase, that is basically for paying these gentlemen the money that they are actually working. Moving on to line 491, Seasonal Workers, that is getting regraded, as we discussed during the comp plan, to a PT 6A. We have been having a hard time attracting people to our seasonal positions, so by moving that to $18 an hour, we hope to do that, so we increased that line to reflect the salary adjustment, as well as the need for more seasonal workers. Whether we get them or not is yet to be determined. Number 492, as discussed during comp plan, we call it the Principal Clerk, but that position really is a Business Manager of the Public Service Department. Pam has been with us for about two years in that position, maybe one and a half, she's doing a fantastic job, so that is a regrade to an S 20A increase. And then our part-time clerk, Rosemary, is a PT 10, that just reflects a 3% increase, so that is the administrative part of public services. Shall I?
Any questions?
I, just a comment, congratulations on moving that up a bit, I remember the same conversation last year about the difficulty in finding seasonal workers, so congrats on being able to bump that up a bit.
Also, with that, with the Principal Clerk, if the position is more like a Business Manager, can we look at re-titling that to be more appropriate for the scale?
Good point.
Yeah, we have a lot of other clerks in other offices, and they're doing more work and getting paid more, it'd better have a position.
Yeah. Okay. So moving on to line 497, that's the Airport, there is no change in the budget, that represents the city's contribution to the airport, not much to say there. Line 516 is the Cemetery, lines 518 and 519 reflect contractual obligations, and on line 527, under expenses, that reflects the increase of the clothing allowance per the contract.
Question on that, for laborers for the cemetery, how many do we have?
Currently, we have, no, we have four.
Okay, so that salary covers four different employees?
Well, one is technically a floater, so it's paid out of highway.
Okay.
The other, so we have three, three full-time cemetery people.
So one working foreman, two full-time, and then the floater.
Correct.
Okay, so the labor position, that budget item covers two.
Yes.
Correct.
I was gonna say that.
Okay, that makes, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, with the cemetery, and your laborers, and your foremen, so obviously, we've been seeing down there around the range, there's, you know, the expansion is happening, is our employees that are doing that work?
Yes and no, so we're, we're doing some of it. DR Billings has done it, donated a bunch of time into it. They needed a place to put down for a couple of big jobs in the area, so we allowed them to use the lot, and they've, in lieu of that, they've, they've done the grading and things like to help fill it in, and so we, we don't have any of our resources into it financially so far, but we will at some point.
Is there a timeline when those lots will become available?
I'm hoping they're available by the end of the summer.
Okay.
Back, back to the airport, what is the status of the Airport Manager? Do we still have nobody in that role?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do, okay.
No, yes, we have an opening in that role.
Right, gotcha.
Yes.
Do we have a timeline for when that person might be hired?
When we find a qualified individual, the issue that we have right now at the Airport is we don't have an Airport Commissioner. We only have two standing members on the Airport Commission, we had got another resignation.
Sorry to give that.
I am too.
Just, just a quick question here, Blackington Cemetery, is that covered? Do you guys go down and do the Blackington and maintain that as well?
We do. That, as you know, is kind of a late acquirement, the city picked up. That's not, there's not as much attention to that as there is the other two cemeteries, but they go over there every three weeks and they cut the grass, and we send the whole crew over, they knock it all out in one day.
Okay, sounds good, I know they just put a, a nice honor roll down there, so it'd be nice if we still maintained it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, can I add, just follow-up question about the Airport Manager, there isn't any salary amount in here, is that, where is that posted?
The salary amount?
Well, there's no, there's no salary here in, am I missing that on line 499 and 500?
Yeah, so that, all of the funds are, come out of a revolving, Jen?
Okay, perfect.
So that's the city's contribution.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please continue.
Okay, so we're on line 531, Council on Aging, all the salaries that you see are reflective of a 3% increase. We do need to look at, in the very near future, the, our van driver salaries and all the salaries for that staff, but for those, this budget, we are showing a 3% increase for those salaries, and there was no request for any increases in expenses for Council on Aging. Line?
Council Blackman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Director's salary under that, is that, we don't pay all of it, right?
We do get the Formula Grant, which reimburses us for some of that.
So are we?
That's the gross.
This is the, oh, so this is the gross?
Yes.
Okay, just like, I want to make sure, because I don't know if it's always been represented that way.
And also, with the van drivers, do you know how many van drivers we have?
Two.
How much do they get currently per hour?
There are Z... Z dash rules? Yeah. For anyone where, there probably, most of them right now are making 16, 40 to 16, 64, possibly, just have to look that up a little bit more, but they're in that Z1 range.
And are two drivers enough to put them in?
Right now, we say yes.
Okay.
That's to be evaluated, but they are very busy.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Moving on to line 551, just got that in my notes, Tim has requested a $25,000 increase. For us, we consider this the cost of doing business without a full-time engineer. This year, this fiscal year into next year, we've had a focus on the study of walls, such as the Walnut Street area. We are running a special on retaining walls that just fall down, and then there's a question whether there are walls, or they belong to the property owners, et cetera. We've been spending this money on environmental consultants that aren't covered by grants, and a lot of boundary work, and that work still needs to be completed. So Tim often doesn't ask for increases like this, but we have a lot of work that needs to be, be done moving forward.
Any questions on that?
Yes, how would this, I, I know it's come up before, through, I believe, another counselor, hiring an engineer in lieu of this, you know, have we, we figured that out, the balance between the two?
Well, we have, you know, a wonderful engineering department years ago, some of it is so specialized that the environmental piece has become big, that even a city engineer may not have that experience.
We need another specialist anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I would love to have an in-house engineer and be maintaining all of our maps and records, we're very fortunate that Tim dabbles in that and tries to keep up with, with all of that, but it is something in the future that we really seriously need to take a look at, just for people, when even they come in and they, you know, have boundary questions, or how to read the map, Jessica's done a great job in, in learning, but, you know, when I first started working here, we had three engineers. We did talk last year with Adams about having a shared position, but that didn't really go very far, so right now, this is kind of where we're at, but that is something on the priority list for the future.
Thank you.
To add to that, it would be multiple positions, it wouldn't be just a engineer.
Council Blackman?
I just, I wanted to quick, I'm sorry, van drivers, I just happened to look at the Z1, and it starts with year one of 1592, this is the compensation plan, and then it goes to 1660, and then year three, it goes to 1592, and year four, it's 1592, year five is, so we need to take a look at that real life?
Yeah. The formula.
The, yeah, something, some cell got missed somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The good thing about that is they're all in the early part of the chart.
Right, and I, but I remember back in the day, when they were all, right, particularly the clerk Marilyn, from all the clerks, you said, like, you go through this with a fine tune and cone and check everything, I don't know if anybody, if that's still kind of handled by you guys or what, but it, don't bother me, sorry.
No, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to page?
Before you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the engineering, how much has been currently spent for this fiscal year?
I think we're overspent.
I think we're over.
We are. We missed the, pardon me, I'm going, I can't hear you, 41. Okay. Yeah, we're overspent by about, yeah, we're, China's, whatever it is, yeah, we're overspent about by 75,000.
So how much did we spend this year total?
150,000. But we know with what we've done this year and what's coming on for next year, what we're projecting.
So is the $100,000 of the payment, is that going to be enough?
Yes.
Are we gonna be over it on next year?
Yes, because we, we, I've already designed the heck out of the Walnut Street repair, and that's where most of the, the money has gone, and we're wrapping up any mo, some of our hazardous stuff, but we went through and did some trends, and that was Tim's recommendation.
Council Blackman? Isn't also having some of the engineer work mean we're quote shovel-ready, so?
Correct.
If a grant comes in, we can say, boom, yeah, we spent, overspent by 75, but that allowed us to get this $500,000 grant.
Correct.
Okay, and it's always good money to spend.
Yeah, not a problem with the spending, my question would be, should we budget a little bit more to be ready for those kinds of things, knowing that we have even more projects?
Again, we looked at what we think we're gonna be able to accomplish in the next year, so the thought was that the $100,000 was appropriate, but I will say that things come up, emergencies happen, who would have thought, you know, who would have, we had a wall collapse on, was it Meadow or?
Winter Street.
Winter, which we didn't anticipate.
That's what the reserve lines were.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to add to it, and we all, we put in for grants all the time to help with design and engineering, I mean, for example, the one we got a couple of years ago, the dams, dam and seawall grant, which was a half a million dollars, and we're still working on that project for the dams, we're into the permitting part of that right now, so we're, we try to find the money first before we spend it here.
Absolutely, yes. Questions from the audience? Yes?
Yeah, since we went over the budget on that, how was that covered? I don't recall, did we transfer money in?
No, we'll do year-end transfers.
What's that?
We'll do a year-end transfer.
Okay, so that's okay to do.
And we're also examining that account to see if some of those services we could write off to the flood mitigation money.
Okay. And then to, to understand correctly, when we talked about, when Council Fitch talked about hiring versus the contracts, is it, would it be my understanding correct to say, if we had an engineer, we might be paying them, let's just say, 80 to 100,000, but yet we probably still have to be spending 50 to 80,000 anyway, because the engineer we probably have would not be able to cover all the special touches.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Interpretation, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, if we can hop back to Council on Aging just for a second, the aide that's listed in 536, is that a position that's going to be filled, and it would appear that one position is not there? I can't imagine that the third person working in there is only making 70, 800 dollars.
The Formula Grant, yeah. Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so that, that, or that position was covered for the past few years by the Service Incentive Grant, actually, and also the Formula Grant covers that, so that's just a portion that the city pays of, of that grant, I mean, of that, that position, I'm sorry. So we're thankful that we get grants for those positions to cover.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Yep, and just to reiterate, I believe, it's hard to hear back here, so I apologize, that, I believe that I heard the mayor said there was no requested funds for an increase in programming there?
No, not for expenses, correct.
Okay, correct.
Sorry, I can't turn all the way up.
That's okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think next year, we need to set, change it.
Yeah, I agree.
More harsh, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, please continue.
Okay, page 10, highways, that's why Tim's here.
Everyone's here.
I'll take most of it, so line 562, we're on page 10 for the Gallery, the working foreman, laborers, overtime, most of that is driven by our contract obligations, I will say, we had a successful negotiation with the Teamsters, however, I still am not satisfied with where they are to be competitive with our surrounding communities, we've kind of stabilized the melt, and when I say that, I mean losing people. We've kind of, um, stabilized the melt, and when I say that, I mean, losing people for, to other communities because of wages. Um, but we are still having problems getting new people in the door. So that is an ongoing discussion that we're having. So we're gonna see where everybody lands this fiscal year, and we may come back, um, with a memorandum of understanding in the future to address some of these salaries. I know that, uh, so basically, these salaries represent our contractual obligations of what the current salaries are. And for overtime, I don't know what we have to do with Mother Nature, but we get those freezing rain storms, those little nuisance storms, every Saturday or Sunday, or Monday holiday in the winter. So looking at where we've been trending, again, Tim requests for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and our numbers can support that. Under highways for expenses, again, cost of, everything has gone up, cost of treating, issues, cost of maintaining our building. And tree removal, we're removing more trees than we ever have, just because they're ours and they're old and they're dying. Um, and we're trying to protect people's homes and nuisances when we do have storms, so we're not, we can focus on clearing the streets and not cutting down trees. So that's kind of, again, true to where we are with our spending. So, and then snow and ice, um, again, you know, we spent two hundred eighty-six in fiscal year twenty-four. We looked at that number and Tim wanted to, you know, be fair because we are asking for significant increase in wages. Um, and we just hope that it only snows seven to four-thirty Monday through Friday next year. Tim, did I miss anything?
No, just, uh, you know, I know, uh, Counsel Shade loves it when we go up with building maintenance, budget line items. And, and against the trees, we, the wind has been so, and these trees aren't trees that we can cut down. I have to have somebody come in that has the equipment, so we've spent some money on that this year.
Any questions, Counsel Blackmore?
Um, line five seventy-three, highway, what does that mean? What are highway expenses?
That are basically our general expenses. That's our parts for the trucks, you know, uh, little, uh, small equipments, mostly parts and general expenses for.
Okay.
For that, that's.
Um, also, and what's our year-to-date this year, snow and ice? Do you have that number?
That one's over too, I can tell you.
I'm sure.
Yeah, four hundred and six, we're over four hundred and six thousand, variance of a hundred and eighty-one.
And for the public certification, that is one of the few accounts we can overspend. For DOR, we can either move money at the end of the year or add it on to the next year's tax recap.
We usually move at the end of the year.
Any ques, any other questions here?
Can I just talk about snow and ice? So, um, also just keep in mind, these windstorms and rainstorms are becoming more treacherous than snowstorms. And I find that we're out more for heavy rain and flooding in areas that we don't predict. So we're seeing flooding in areas that we never saw before. You know, I'll get a call regularly, you know, they need to clean the catch bases, they need to clean the manholes. Well, as soon as we clean them, they fill back up again. So it has been a challenge with the heavy, heavy rain, quick heavy rain.
With that, they have a question, um, with the heavy rains. Twenty-five thousand for the sewer budget, so what did we spend this past fiscal year? Is that going to be enough? Could we use more there to, to help with this flooding problem?
That doesn't go to flooding.
Okay.
So there's a.
Does that go to pipes when they're first?
There's a line item for flood control.
Okay.
There. So that is for, uh, cutting, the expenses for cutting, the brush, the grass around the flood control areas. That also takes care of any, any storm system-related materials that's needed. Same with the sewer maintenance lines, the same thing, anything related to sewer maintenance. Could be a pump in the pump station, it could be telemetry, could be just replacing a manhole cover. You know, there's, there's a lot of factors for that.
Ken, do you know what our current fiscal year is for those two lines?
Yeah.
For control and sewer maintenance?
So sewer maintenance, um, we have an ending balance of twen, ending balance of twenty-one thousand. So we haven't spent a lot there. And, um, what was your second?
Flood control.
Flood control.
Nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
And there are, there are things ordered that haven't come in yet, especially this sewer maintenance line item.
Yeah.
I have a new pump coming in for the Mass Ave pump station. That's about twelve thousand dollars. And it's a proprietary pump. So I can only get it from one place.
And that's gonna heat up to us to the remaining budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There's, there's still a lot of, a lot of fiscal year left for us.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, so some of these, I think we already covered. I had a bulleted items here. So we did the cemetery, it's a big expansion. The main DPW building, I know even from the day we bought it, it was some questionable roof issues.
They're still.
And we know there's still some roof issues. So how and when are we gonna budget or handle that? Because I don't think twenty thousand dollars, building maintenance, is going to affect that. Let me just go through this and decide. Transfer station buildings, that's not here, right? Is that under DPW or health? Transfer station buildings?
It's real, well, the transfer station's under the health department, but we really don't budget for those buildings.
All right, well, so I'll bring that up just to see where it comes. So, I mean, I noticed, you know, I think it was a few or several years back, we fixed up some of the buildings up there, like with the siding and stuff, and I noticed they're getting pretty rough again. Um, I know the recycling building, which again, the city didn't build. It was an asphalt building that we have repurposed. And I didn't know what the plans are with that because, at least when I've gone in it, structurally, it still looks sound, but I also noticed most of the exterior siding and roof is starting to go, and which will then end up deteriorating the chef home. So I didn't know how we're approaching that. Um, hydrants, I know is coming up down the list. The salt shed plans, um, again, building maintenance. You know, year, a few years ago, we put them up for RFP, but I think at this point, it's still plans to keep it because, uh, we talked about moving the salt and the sand down to the main DPW building.
And we're still talking about that.
Okay. And then other major equipment, such as, you know, the trucks, the excavators and sweepers, how are we doing with any of that? Is there anything major coming up that we see that might need to be replaced? And then finally, and again, I don't know where exactly this falls in, but with the downtown area, the sidewalks, um, that are crumbling. And, um, you know, we're going back now, we have lampposts down there that have been broken for almost two decades now. And, you know, they never got replaced after accidents and things. And I just don't know where that would fall in here, so I'll leave it at that.
So, um, let's, can I work backwards?
Yeah, you can work anywhere you want.
So the sidewalks on Main Street, we are looking at, um, programs similar to what used to be the P-Wed program, to do a facelift. We have a one-stop-in for, like, Eagle and a portion of Main. And we also have on our to-do list to skim cope those sidewalks, especially the ones here in Mountain One. The streetlights are covered under wire and alarm budget. Uh, we have tried to stay on top of, you know, when somebody hits it, charging their insurance, that kind of stuff. So I have to go and look and see what streetlights you're talking about.
I'll send you pictures.
I know you will. The salt shed, that's an ongoing conversation. I'd love to get rid of all that property and move the salt shed, that costs money. And we can't have the salt shed in the building. As far as the DPW building itself, we do need a new roof. Um, we did spend some money this year to have Titan come and secure, like, from No Pause down to Mitchell Shop, the wire and alarm shop, um, which seems to be holding, the patch seems to be holding, but the backside, where Tim, from No Pause to Tim and back, um, I think it's been leaking since the day we bought the building. Um, and that is a huge project, huge project. We do have some design work already done for that. But the question is, can we piece it off, or do we have to do the whole thing at once? And we just haven't gotten back to it. We've been limping along with that building. The transfer station, I didn't realize that the buildings looked that rough, so, Tim, I don't know if you have an answer to that, but we'll look into it.
Well, the, we were working on a plan to not keep recycling up in the big building up there. We've been in talks with Casella about, uh, possibly getting compactors, compacting everything and then hauling it to Pittsfield. The original talks were hauling it to panel, but that, they're not up there anymore. So we're still having those talks.
Would, would I be correct, though, that, I mean, the bones of the recycling building seem still.
Well, it, it's, it's structurally sound.
There's holes in the roof, so obviously rain and weather coming through.
Yeah, but that's, that, that doesn't hurt anything there.
Okay.
So, and the holes in the roof are from somebody going up there shooting with a buck, with buckshot.
I was wondering, because they look like that.
Yeah, that's what it is. And that's been like that for, since Maximilian was using it.
Any other questions?
Um, I just wanted to ask about the, uh, snow removal. Um, I've read an article that, um, Great Barrington was using like a sluice kind of thing, is that the right term? A different mix, and to replace the salt, you know? And then they were actually saving money with it. And I just wanted to know if we had looked into that, or there's a reason it's not appropriate here, or whatever.
We've tried, uh, the coated salt that has the metachloride coating area on it. We've tried beet juice, we've tried a product that's molasses. All that did was attract deers to a salt shed. And, and makes a mess.
Hence my buckshot.
You know, we, we don't, we, we, we use sand very sparingly, because it plugs up culverts and brooks and, you know, we're concerned with fisheries and things like that. Right now, the, the, the best bang for our buck has been the salt. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions there? And before we move on, I just wanna say, with the salt and the roadwork, uh, our crews do a fabulous job of cleaning up the road, so thank you, Toll, and thank you for all the work that those crews do. Please continue.
Okay, we already did libraries, so we're gonna move on to, we're still on page ten, line six eleven, parks and recreation. Um, the salary increases are reflective of contract obligations, and an adjustment for clothing allowance, um, a small reduction. Um, Tim, how many people, we have two in, a working foreman and then two laborers, correct?
Correct.
For all the lawns that they cover and the fields that they maintain?
Thirteen parks.
Yeah, that's, um.
And trash on Mondays and Fridays.
Is it time for question or later? No time for question. As we're talking about parks, that's all. I just have a question about parks.
Yeah, Congress.
Okay. Um, the Beaver Street Park. I noticed I drive by there and I see the kids playing and the place is really in rough shape. Really rough shape. And I'm wondering if there's anything that we plan to do there, or is it something that we're just letting, letting it ride?
If, if there's kids there all of a sudden, that's something new, because there hasn't been kids there in a long time. The, they go in and they cut it and they do the basic, you know, stuff that we do. Our big focus is on Alkemright and Noel Field, because they're our biggest parks and they require the most. So most of the other parks are just a cut and weed whack and, you know, if something breaks, and then we, we get in there and do that.
Okay. Sounds good. I drive by there quite often, and I have recently, in the last year or so, seen quite a few kids down there. Um, mostly playing basketball. So maybe if we could get some basketball nets or something, so that they have at least that?
Yeah.
That would be great, thank you.
I'll let Barbie know.
Yes, Counsel Blackmore?
Where do the flowers on Main Street come in? Where are they, parks and wrecks? Do they?
So most of the funding for the flowers on Main Street come out of what we call, um, I call it the solid sound account. I inherited that. And that is the money that the city gets from the camping at, um, yeah, sure, Steel Field and further down, Desanti Field. So most of the money for that comes out of the solid, what we call it, solid sound. So when we have events, we get paid a portion of the rental, and that money gets deposited in the solid sound, and that's how I've been paying for, um, the flowers.
Because, didn't, in the past, weren't they, didn't we have a garden club or somebody?
The garden, I didn't.
The garden club and.
Thank you. Volume loud.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So the majority of the funding for the flowers come out of an account called Solid Sound. Those are the proceeds we get for when we have Mass Mocha events and we, um, we sell, uh, camping spaces down at Joel Field, Desanti Field, Steel Field, in that area. And depending, we, you know, depending on where, um, we land with numbers, if there isn't enough, we take it out of parks or highway. Um, but most of that funding is a result of those camp sites.
Okay, how much are we spending on it?
About twelve grand. And we have this argument every year, whether we have, um, someone maintain it or we have our own guys maintain it, and when we decide that our guys are gonna maintain it, we have five water main breaks and then we have to get caught up with the flowers. So we kind of trade off a little bit in the sense that, um, in the beginning, when we get them growing, Field takes care of them, and then once they get booming and they're hardy, so to say, um, then the water department starts watering them and, and it, it is, it is a task, but the community, for the most part, loves it.
Oh, a question. So it's twelve grand, which means it's over ten? Are we getting our three, three written quotes, or are we just?
So that is a conversation that we've had in this budget cycle, that we should field all of our outside landscaping and put them all together under one RFP to get that. So we're finishing up this cycle, so as we move forward for next cycle, with Maria, um, being the queen of procurement now, um, those are things that she and Stacy are looking at. So in the past, they've all been separate projects. You know, Tim has, um, some people do landscaping around Joel Field, Quicken around the cemetery, um, another cemetery.
You could sit under the fifty and then hopefully it'll change to a hundred and.
We couldn't get that lucky in our lifetime.
I know. Well, they got it for school, so they're hoping, I know they're pushing for this. Because that would just mean we just need three written quotes.
Yes.
And not the whole tedious process of.
We do, we do in the winter ask other vendors, but right now, Field has really been the only one who's been responsive and great to work with.
Okay.
And they do a great job, and they take a lot of pride in that.
Questions?
Yes. Coming from old-school days, can I ask, um, when, I remember when we used to use the off-campus program, because that is certainly, although it's great that we have a source of revenue that twelve thousand dollars from, I find it, it's just a little odd when I drive by and we're selling flowers at the off-campus program and we're paying a lot more for them to buy them from the winged, um, sourcer. But I do kind of question that, and also the girls down there used to do a fabulous job maintaining and planting, um, right from that off-campus program, so is that at all gonna be considered in?
We, I did.
The future, or we just move away from that?
Um, I think it really all evolves around staffing at the greenhouse, Jen. What we found my first year back was, um, some of the flowers weren't hardy enough for that soil. You, you, you probably know more than I do. And there's a lot more upkeep until now than there was. But that's always a possibility. But in the beginning, it was, could you produce the vine that we needed? And then the second question was, did we have staff to do that? They have some beautiful flowers down there, as you do at your farm. But this has just been, for us, the most efficient way, and Field drops out of the sky right before Memorial Day, puts on the plants, and then they have a whole team. Um, and we certainly don't want students out, um, but we don't have the staff like we did years ago with the willingness, I think, to do that kind of job. That we used to call them the sunflower girl.
They did a fabulous job.
They did.
I just, yeah.
Absolutely.
Adrian Field is doing it. I just was a little concerned as to why we're not selling flowers, because people aren't shopping with them and we're buying them, anyway. Thanks for clarifying, I appreciate it.
No, thank you for your question.
Counsel Fitch?
It sounds like we have a, a lot of parks to manage, and it sounds like maybe, you know, not all of them get the same priority. Just curious, how do, how do we assess the state of the parks? And how do we decide when it's time to upgrade them, um, or to upload them, you know, close them? What does that look like?
Well, that's part of the capital plan that we would need to work on. As far as the maintenance goes on, they have a, a, a.
Can you speak a little louder?
Sorry, I'm a horse today anyways.
Yeah.
So as far as the maintenance plan goes, it's a, you know, they have, they go in order, basically around the, around the town, city, and start all over again. So it's, it's, there's really no time for a big renovation project in-house. That would have to be a, you know, a go-out-to-bid type of thing to do a park over. And parks aren't cheap.
I believe it.
The playground equipment, we put up at the lake, um, and we got that on sale. You know, that, that was pretty significant cost, and that was somebody from the outside coming in and solving. I don't have staff to do it. You know, we're skeleton crew at best, we all know that. And we do what we can and what we got. We have too many parks for the people we have. Parks department had fifteen people in it at one time.
That's kind of what I was getting at, you know, like it, do we ever reach? That's kind of what I was getting at, you know, like it, do we ever reach the point with the park where we decide we need to close this park? Or we need to find a new way to update it?
Um, that's not a question for me.
Yeah, we, I mean, we want people outside, we, the only time we would consider closing a park is if it's a safety issue. Um, Tim and Bob monitor those parks all the time and I tell people, if you see something on a playground, please say something. Um, we don't wanna close parks, but we've even had the discussion about outsourcing, um, the parks in that kind of department. But it would be astronomical compared to what we pay these two guys. We're very fortunate, they're very diligent and I know people get upset about mulch or weeds and things like that. Um, but the weather works against us. Um, ninety percent of the time, they're out there rewhacking in the rain, um, which is what we pay them to do. Um, but I don't wanna be the person that closes parks because they're so important to every neighborhood. You know, Murray brought up the Beaver Street, um, growing up, we always used to play basketball up there. Um, we've got Kemp Park, we've got the, um, park near, my house near the hospital.
The one across the street from me.
Yeah, we've got Uno Park, Cleveland Ave, I mean, we do have a lot of parks, but they're so important to the neighborhood kids and the families that live there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are there a lot? Absolutely, and do they all get a hundred percent? Probably not. Um, but we're very fortunate and most of our park neighborhoods, um, some of the community members take ownership as far as picking up trash or, you know, spreading, pulling weeds and things like that.
Yes, I wanna, I mean, we, you talk about there used to be fifteen people in the Parks Department. And we've got all these small neighborhood parks, which are less of a problem because, I mean, they come in and do Cleveland Ave, they're there for an hour. They pull the mowers off the deck, probably takes them almost as long to load up and unload as it does to actually do the park. But we've expanded to major fields, what we've done over, what we've done at Joel, that whole section. What we've done all over at the Alcam Bright Field. So I realize people say, well, we've got, you know, we used to have twenty-four thousand people living in the city and we have almost half, a little more than half of that now. Yeah, but a park is a park, it takes as much time whether five people use it or a hundred and five people or a thousand and five. It still takes man hours of X number of dollars. And, and the, the equipment has been updated, some things are better, I think that has more to do probably with salt and sand and plowing than a lawnmower's a lawnmower. You know, you, a riding deck is a riding deck, I don't think it's gotten that much different in the last thirty years.
They haven't, except the price.
Right, the price is gonna, but you can't see, you know, people say, well, use technology. Well, you're not gonna have a drone going in and mowing your lawn. It's man hours.
And no matter where you find a park, you find people. Like our fields are overused, there are times when we say they need to have resting periods, but we can't find a resting period because we're trying to serve the needs of so many different sports and that's what we want. We want people out there playing. And even our adult sports have increased, specifically soccer, um, that are waiting for the kids to guide, the guide timers are waiting for the kids to come off the field so they can go on and it's just, it's just what community is. It's a public service that we offer.
We expanded Brayton Field. That's all new equipment over there, new basketball court, new, I don't know what they call it, the handball.
Pickleball. That's not pickleball.
That's not pickleball. So that was, that was expanded, that was all grant money, that, that was a couple hundred thousand dollars. Then we did the state for which the school that did the sidewalks and the road over to get into, uh, Brayton School on the, the YMCA side.
And, and the expectations are different, I mean, it used to be you had a swing set, a slide, those little merry-go-round things. People that, you know, we all joke about, you lived, you, you memes about living, surviving it. Now you have to have so many inches of stuff below it, you have to have so much percentage of A D accessible. And these are all great things and I think we should be doing them, but they come at a cost that we didn't have forty years ago.
Right, we're gonna spend about forty-five hundred dollars just on the, the mulch for the playgrounds issue.
I thought it would've been more so, okay.
They have to be special for.
Right, it's a special.
We buy it from, uh, Lashway over in, uh, Northampton, Williamsburg. So that they bring us up and they deliver it and we go out and move it around. But when I started here, it was eight hundred bucks for a load. It's like twenty-five hundred dollars now, twenty-two, twenty-three hundred dollars.
But I think it's an investment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just like we're spending money on our schools, we're spending money on our playgrounds.
We just put all new sewer pumps at Joel Field and Alcam Bright Field.
Oh, good.
You know, it, it's all costs, it's all.
Any other questions on parks? Yes.
Where does the recreation center fall under?
The, the rec center, the front of Y. It's, right now, we're treating it as a revolving, we don't really have a home for it, just like the skating rink, it's an auxiliary.
So any expenses, like, for me, obviously, Tim has spent a fair amount of time over there, any employees?
Tim's time over there.
But any employees that are there, where is that coming out?
Yeah, it's all coming out of a revolving fund.
So it's not on here?
Correct, just like the skating rink is a separate.
In the next year that?
Not in the next year. Uh, I mean, to bring it into our budget, no, not in fiscal year twenty-six. Um, we're still trying to figure out what's going on over there as far as if we're gonna continue to run it ourselves or, um, bring another entity, there are conversations going on with the Boys and Girls Club. Um, but we've just, um, Russell Shump has done a great job with programming over there. Our numbers are really, really good. Um, you know, our pool is getting used, on average, we probably have, um, on Thursdays, ninety to a hundred swimmers. Um, our pickleball leagues over there are filled, our cycle classes are filled, um, Zumba could pick up a little bit, but the, we've got, you know, regular classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We've had, uh, birthday parties over there, um, but the big sell is that pool, people love that pool. And, um, we've partnered with, um, the youth center in Cheshire, um, to do swim lessons on Monday evenings for the kids. Um, we also are running five camps out of, um, the rec center, the leadership camp for the police department, a couple camps, um, through youth center as well as, um, some sporting camps. Um, so we're busy over there, um, but the basic problem is the need of the maintenance of the building and that's why we need a partner.
So that, I guess, also is if anything major comes up, does that revolving fund cover that or is that gonna be coming back to us?
It's gonna probably be coming back to us.
And then, um, and as for the revolving fund, is that saying that the money it's making is paying the cost right now? Or there was another fund or funds somewhere else that is currently covering?
Yeah, right now, it's the revolving that's covering the payroll. Um, it doesn't cost us anything other than electricity, which can be costly for the pool, but we're, we're trying to cover those costs. Um, Tim, God bless him, he, he'll probably kick me under the table. Um, but basically volunteers is time to keep that pool going, he's our certified pool officer. Um, he has trained one of our lifeguards, but he takes tremendous pride in that pool. Um, you could eat off that pool now, that pool deck. I, I think the city yard team cleaned that pool with their toothbrush. Um, it was filthy, that pool building was filthy. Um, and we've done a lot of cleaning, a lot of painting, a lot of sweat equity in that building. Um, but it's becoming quite the hub of our young at heart customers and our youth. They look forward to coming in and swimming and, um, it's fun to see.
And then the last thing on, um, one of the parks, um, which is down at Joel Wolf. Um, I think it's probably six or eight years now, they built a bocce court.
Yep.
But to this day, I don't believe it has been completed, it has not been filled, so it's just a, a wood frame, so either make it a bocce court or fill it with a garden.
Sand in it.
What's that?
Yeah, we put sand in it. It just spat down over time, but I never see anybody in it even when we put the sand in.
It's the right sand, though, I think that's what I've been told, so, okay.
Another question.
Yep. Just, um, I was curious about, um, their revolving fund and the rec center.
That's not part of the budget, right?
Not entirely sure what that means, but is, is my understanding that at some point in time, there was some money put aside to run the rec center and there's money coming in, money coming out? And that's just kind of operating on its own for now, is that?
Yeah, it's operating on its own, there was never any money in my time put aside for the rec center. Um, we had some, uh, seed recreation money that we were gonna invest elsewhere, um, that we used, it was small, it's probably like five thousand dollars to kind of get us up and running before we had people in the building. Um, but it's a revolving, so any revenue that comes in and any expenses is all being captured in this revolving, similar to how we treat the skating rink and the airport. Um, we're not investing as many dollars as we do in like the airport um, because we're still trying to figure out what our strategy is going to be there. Um, but we, we, I am focused on keeping it open and running and keeping the folks on it. I don't wanna turn it over to a completely to an outside entity, I wanna partner with someone.
So the i- idea is that the revolving fund co- covers operations?
That is our.
Big expenses or?
Yeah, we're in our startup phases right now, um, but I think when we, when we get through the summer to see what the first summer looks like with rental income, um, that will help us forecast for the next, I go quarter by quarter with that building.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please continue.
Okay, so we did Parks and Rec on page eleven, line six twenty-eight is, did I skip something? Yes, here we go, six twenty-eight. Uh, Windsor Lake, three percent increase for our campground manager and a slight increase in trash removal services per Tim's request. The campers are very excited up there already.
Councilor.
Um, is this a revol- is a lot of this covered under revolving with the camper ship, the camper fees?
No, no, so the camp fees go into our local receipts under public services and charges to campground. So these are our expenses and then the revenue is part of our local receipts that we use to balance the budget.
Councilor.
I'm sorry to pull us back and I, I don't want to, uh, ruffle feathers, but I do wanna just ask that with the recreation center, I believe it was first mentioned that we did really wanna bring in a third party and to offload it to them. Um, but now, now we're hearing that we wanna partner with somebody and keep some control over it, what, what shifted?
What shifted was, um, the inherent mess that we got in that building by just letting it go to an outside entity. Um, I think, I can't speak for prior to three years, but I think that the city thought that more upkeep was going on in that building than, than what really was happening. Um, even at a basic cleanliness, um, level. Um, so that's when I say I wanna keep a pulse on it. I really wanna keep a pulse on it. Um, the roof issue was there. Um, to the magnitude of what we found was really questionable as to who was checking the store. Um, but we worked through that, we resolved that matter, we're, the building is safe and that's all that matters so we could reopen the pool. Mostly for our young at heart population, that was the goal.
Right.
And now, we're really focused on getting the kids properly trained, getting people trained, um, through reconnecting communities. We have just offered a CPR class, um, about water safety. Um, so, you know, for me, it was an eye opener once we got into that building and really saw the niv- black. And I don't wanna go back that way, only forward.
Thank you for explaining that.
Councilor.
Under the, um, Windsor Lake improvements, what does that cover and is that gonna be enough and where does weed control come in here?
So weed control is separate from this. Um, which, I forgot what account that comes out, there's, there's a line item for that. I don't have it here with me. Comes out of capital, I believe, doesn't it?
No, it's under, um, I think it's under your highway.
No.
It's another health.
But they're, they're actually doing another treatment in like two weeks from now. Off anybody's notice, but the weeds are less this year.
I don't know.
Because they've treated over the winter, so.
Yeah, are we gonna treat like, preferably before school ends so that it's ready when the kids get out?
Well, you have to do it at certain times of year, so.
Oh, because of the fish and the frogs and the caterpillars and the lizards.
It's actually next, next, I sent you the email today, it was next week, I think, they're gonna do a, a treatment up there.
And then what does that, other than that, what is that like over? The Windsor Lake improvement?
Uh, the improvements could be anything, could be uh, paving the road, could be, you know, uh, I think.
Fixing the pavilion.
We did the pavilion, you know, things like that.
Bring in more dirt.
Yeah, we gotta bring sand up there, I gotta get some sand.
Um, is that enough, that's my other question?
Well, it's never enough, but we're gonna buy with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Please continue.
Okay, so we did veteran services, Curtis, thank you for staying with us. Um, we're moving on to line six, six, one, the water department. Um, salaries are reflective of contractual obligations plus we added two more positions to the water department. Um, what happens with us now, a- again, going back in history, when I first started working for the city, I think we had eight to ten people in the water department. Um, so what happens to us when we have a water main break, we're putting in hydrants, we're doing meters. Nine times out of ten, we have to pull people out of highway to come and operate. So the hope is that we would rebuild the water department team so they can really be their own department without having to pull resources. So Tim, you know, when I call Tim about a pothole, he'll say, well, what do you want? Potholes or the cemetery's ready for Memorial Day or this fire hydrant fixed? And I say, what do I say, Tim? I want it all.
Right.
Yes.
So, um, with that, we, we've been kicking around, but this also is a priority in this budget, um, to add more staff, um, to be more efficient and we are also, which will be coming forward to probably in the fall, um, looking to do a water meter replacement, which means we need people to do that. Um, we've been fortunate in having some steady staff, um, in the water department who are very committed to learning and who are getting their licenses and, and learning more about water. Um, but we need more hands, we need more people in the trenches to do that.
Some, some of our problem in the water department is that we train somebody and they go to Adams for eight dollars an hour more. That's been a problem. You know, or Williamstown or wherever, cause they pay more.
So you see, um, an increase, I need to change the head count there. Um, you see an increase specifically because we added two more positions in salaries. Um, no major, no changes for expenses at this time.
What is the total number of laborers on that line item?
So, um.
So we have one foreman and we'll, or we will, we will have five laborers and that includes the meter reader. Which, they call them operators, they're not laborers.
They do that from the street now, right, with a little machine?
What's that?
They do it from the street with a little machine now?
Little machine.
Like, they don't literally, they don't come in and read the water meters anymore.
They touchpad.
Uh, they're touchpads, we have some radios. So, but we're, we're not that far along that we're, drive around in a car just to read meters.
Well.
They actually have to walk house to house and touch that.
Okay, they have to come up to the house.
But we're not using the old silver books anymore.
And you're not like, gotta go in the cellar and go down and look.
Well, we're trying to eliminate that, but very few of those now.
Any other questions? I have one other expenses, um, the repairs line, what is our current fiscal year on that count?
Which repairs line?
Um, it says expenses repairs line six ninety-four.
Six ninety-four is under the filtration.
It's under the filtration plant.
Done.
We're not there yet, but we.
And everything else level funded this year.
Are we okay to move on to water filtration?
Mm-hmm.
So under line six.
I'll wait till water filtration.
Under line six eighty-four, water filtration plant. Um, we have two plant operators and a mechanic which you funded a few years ago for us. Those basically represent, um, the increase per the comp plan. And then we've increased the overtime budget, um, to have a little, a, a bit of a buffer in there. Um, these employees are not part of the bargaining unit, but they are subject to overtime. So when we have a, a full fire, when we have water main breaks, um, after hours, an operator needs to go in and be present in the plant. Um, the plant, sorry, Tim, I'm talking about your baby, but.
Oh, go ahead.
The plant, for the most part, runs on autopilot, um, but we're very fortunate that we've invested over the years in the plant, but we still need an operator there to interpret what the plant is telling us, whether we need more water in certain areas or less water. Um, so, um, we're pretty good and we have a seasoned laborer force up there, an operator force. Um, but having the mechanic in the plant, um, has been great. But having the mechanic in the plant has been great. And he also services other pump stations within the city, so he's servicing all of the pumps and all the mechanics for the whole filtration system. So as far as salaries, that's pretty much on par with everything that we've talked about. And then we've had overall increases that you see before, because of the cost of operations, cost of parts and repairs to keep our plant up to date and running. Tim, anything you'd like to add?
No, you covered them there.
All right, I'm learning.
Questions from the committee members? Questions from the other council members?
Yes, okay. Have the prices for Tim, have the price of chemicals seemed to stabilize or are we still seeing an increase year to year?
Uh, while we were having multiple hundreds of percents increase, this year they seem to have kind of leveled out.
Okay.
So you'll notice that line item didn't go up. I got, I think about twenty thousand left in that line item, but I do have stuff ordered. So I think we'll be right at a break even point with that this year. But a lot of it depends on the organic loading of the water up there. That dictates how much chemical you use. We've had a lot of rain this year, a lot of organic loading. So hopefully we don't get a lot of rain this next.
I know between the first year and the second year that I was involved with the budget, we saw like the price has doubled over a period of one year. And I'm just curious if that was still the case or things have seemed to level.
They, they have seemed to level out.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah. Here's a question I ask every year when we go through the budget and it's with the hydrants. You can see that we have a budget that replaced ten of them.
Well.
No?
That ten is an old number on there that should get removed because hydrants now are almost four thousand dollars a piece.
All right, so that needs to be improvised. That being said, I ask every year, where are we at with how many are not working and usually it's been pretty good, but.
So we answered that, I think at the last meeting, we have five that are in play today, we might be getting one more. I, I could name all but two. So we have five with today's incident, six in play, but the sixth one today, we hopefully is a gate issue. So the team, again, as availability of people are working, but they're always not the same five. It seems like every time we have this discussion, the magic number is five. But the team is doing really well and keeping them up and keeping them tested and the fire department's doing their testing as well. So we're in a better position than we were, I think it was, what, ten years ago, eight years ago?
Five years ago.
Twenty years ago, it was three hundred.
Right. That's right.
I'm trying to find.
Any other questions?
That was for fifty of them, several years ago. But when we had three hundred, we didn't do any borrowing. That was all in-house repairs and replacements.
I have a question on, on the hydrants again. Where are we at in seeing those five that are down now six? How long before that operation?
Well, the sixth one, hopefully we're going to resolve tomorrow with the gate in your area. But it all depends on.
And again, we have potholes, so the crew that I have fixing potholes are the crew that I need to pull to run equipment to replace a hydrant, the ones that need to be replaced. The ones that need to be repaired are repaired in, in place. But I, the five that we have now are pretty much all replacements.
Okay.
Um, so that concludes the public services budget.
Any questions? Other committee members? From the audience? Seeing the questions?
I move that we recommend the public services budget as presented to the full council.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's three aces, the motion carries.
So the last item that we have is the Huzic Water Quality District, which is on page fourteen, line seven seventeen. We have an increase of twelve thousand three eighty-three, which basically we attribute to the cost of operational expenses at the Huzic Water Quality District. But there's been a lot of talk and a lot of press and a lot of meetings around where we may be going at the water district. So I wanted to ask Tim to update the finance committee. This budget is presented as if we continue to operate the way we always have. But there is dismay that we may not be able to continue to operate that, which will cause us to have a huge increase. So, Tim, I'll let you.
So the magic word is PFAS. There's PFAS in everything these days. So the state and EPA are in a fact finding mode about whether or not they're going to allow composting to be continued at wastewater plants. So right now, there's a two-year extension, so we're good for, I think till twenty-eight right now to, to keep going as is. The hard part is getting rid of it right now. In short, we could jump from half a million a year to a million dollars a year over the next several years of increased cost for the Huzic Water. And it's all because of getting rid of our sludge, which they call it sludge, it's really not sludge, it's called cake, but it's, you know, that's a wastewater term that nobody seems to like cake, but. So I just, I just want to make everybody aware of where the potential costs are going to be, be heading in the next couple of years.
When would we expect to see this at the budget?
The increase, big increases, it could be next year, it could be two years from now, I don't, we don't know yet. It's all on, it's all on what the EPA and DEP.
Counselor.
Yeah, and I believe that if I remember correctly from the last district meeting that you had, the change would mean that it would have to be disposed of in a landfill instead of composted, the cake?
That would be, yes, it would be an approved site.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But that would be for EPA and DEP to determine, not, not the district.
Counselor.
So we bill water based on actual usage. That goes into receipts.
Local receipts.
Local receipts. And we bill sewer, which is the Huzic Water. It was at one point forty-two percent or something, I don't know. We bill it as a percentage of the water bill, correct?
Sewer is based, yes, is it fifty percent?
Fifty percent, yeah. So my question is, the idea being you bill sewer based on water because if it's coming in, it's going into the system. Now, I worked in another community where you, we, you could get an outside meter, you put it on. And if you have a pool or a garden, like particularly a pool, I know I've seen people get an abatement on their, on their sewer bill. But if you have a garden, you don't really get that. And if it's a year like last year where you're literally watering every other day, it's, it's coming in, it's not going out, it's going into the ground. So do we have that? Hasn't, I mean, obviously if we consider that, then that means that the rate. And there was also a minimum, like it didn't matter, like you had, I forget, it was cubic feet, I think, is how it's done? Because it was a while ago, it's been three or four years since I've done it. And so the idea, you had a minimum no matter what, so if you're, if you'd get an abatement or you'd get a deduction if you used thirty-five hundred and yet, but you could, your outdoor meter said you used a hundred going out, you'd get twenty-five, but if the minimum was twenty-eight, you got charged for twenty-eight. Have, and I know it complicates things.
It would complicate things. Instead of forty-five hundred meters, we'd have nine thousand meters.
Well, no, because not everybody would want one. It would only be people that, it, it's only worth it if you do a lot.
Right.
And it just seems more fair, but then again, also maybe we need, you know, right now we're charging fifty percent, do we move it up to sixty percent to offset the fact that some people aren't using it? I don't know, it's just, it's just a thought. And I don't know how many people we have that have gardens that aren't farms, but I'm guessing there are some people that use a lot of water, whether they have livestock or other outside water. And I know I've asked this question before and nobody really wanted to deal with it.
And I can tell you, I am one of them.
So that's just, that's more editorializing than actually.
But I think when, back when, when Mayor Alkenbright started the sewer charge, that was all considered to come up with this percentage of water that's being used in the home, that's not being used. You know, it, it should be a hundred percent of whatever and have a charge for it, but it's, that's not.
Right, it's rather fifty percent.
Right.
Questions from the committee members? Yeah.
Okay, for Tim, I know several years ago, there was a program to determine whether or not rain gutters and storm drains were going into the sewer system. Has that been looked into recently and what percentage?
Yeah, we're at, it's called an INI study, inflow and infiltration.
Okay.
There's actually ones going on currently right now. We have Ty and Bond that are doing some inspections right now.
Okay.
And they're tying that in with our lead and copper line replacement. Because that's coming, if you have a galvanized line in your, your home, there's, there's no lead lines anymore. But if you have a galvanized line, there's enough concern that there's lead and galvanized that, you know, you could have a potential there. So EPA has ordered a inventory for everybody. It's not just us, it's everybody. And we're just finishing that up right now. It's due July first.
So we don't really have an actual idea right now of how much INI we do have going into.
INI, no. The next step would be having camera inspections for the whole. And they did that back in the nineties, we still have that information. But I'm, I'm sure it's, you know, we've taken care of a lot of areas over the years since I've been here.
Right.
Uh, yeah, quickly, it's a follow-up to Counselor Fitch, you may remember from the district meeting. If, you could just help us, the public, understand how this, again, these calculations come out for the Huzic Quality Water District line? Because their budget had to be repealed due to the fact that, I'm sure you're shaking your head now that it's coming back to you. Their budget is not actually even completed yet. They had to pull their budget back and they're not looking at that until next week. So how would that allocation take place? And Counselor Whitmer, I'm going to pludge on for that abatement because I put an awful lot of water in water troughs every day and taking care of plants, so. Good for you.
One of the, one of, one of the reasons why we are so delayed this year was exactly that. This undetermined Huzic Water Quality District budget. And we were kind of at the point of no return. So we're budgeting as if the, the, whatever their March fourteenth proposal was, what was originally presented to us. And then whatever is determined and whatever the fate is of these cakes and things like that, we'll cross that bridge when it comes. But for our budgeting cycle, we couldn't wait any longer. And we had to proceed with the data that we had. Tim, I don't know if you want to talk about what the next steps?
That budget that is presented here tonight is the budget that's going on the floor two days from now, which will be voted on. That was the original budget. We were given three different budgets. And the first one was doing business as is, which we're going to continue. The other one was the option of the Casella hauling out and bringing stuff in and the revenue stream would have went up, which offset the budget. The budget was actually lower. So we're going with the original budget as is, so these numbers are accurate.
Any new questions?
Yes, to Commissioner, or Governor Mayor. The cost of what we charge in the sewer fees does not cover the cost of the sewer. Would that be correct?
Correct.
Right, and that's, and if you look across the state and actually much of New England, you would find that most communities, the sewer fees are seventy-five, eighty, ninety, a hundred. And there's actually communities where they're over a hundred because the sewer costs more than the water to process. I know people, stonebirds from here that live down in Florida, and they said their sewer fee is a hundred and forty percent the water fee. And again, it's just the cost of this processing, the sewage. And as the commissioner said, like with these new EPA regulations and how we handle our sludge and mulch and stuff like that, that it just will be some huge jumps that we unfortunately will probably at that time have to consider how to, how to deal with that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Just as a quick follow-up to that, one of the other recommendations that was made in the meeting was that if this is the determination coming out of this week's budget proposal, that maybe the sewer fees needed to be looked at and a small cap put on those so that some money could start being saved and put away now for when we do have to deal with this quick five hundred or million dollar increase.
Yeah, that discussion is being had internally.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion to, or it was an explanation of something that we've already moved the entire.
You did, I don't think you voted on unclassified.
I don't think, I think we held off on it.
Okay, then I move that we recommend approval of section six, unclassified expenses for approval to the full council.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three aces, the motion carries. I believe that is all the business we have for this evening.
When are we doing that, Tim?
I, I was going to add that under other budget items on Wednesday.
So right now, we're looking, unless we run into a big problem on Wednesday, like something happens and people can't show us a meeting. Could we keep our Monday's schedule, move it to six-thirty and actually go over the income and the reserve accounts?
Well, remember with, I don't have to tell you this, Counselor, but remember with the revenue piece, that is all mostly in, with the revenue piece, that is somewhat in flocks. We don't vote on revenues until we set the tax rate. So we include that in our packet, but we really don't do a presentation because everything is estimated. And we're still working on closing out our receipts for fiscal year twenty-five, so everything is estimated. That revenue discussion comes in when we do the tax rate.
I understand that, but I still would like to see, like, we're, we're going to basically make a motion to raise a certain amount of money through taxation. It would be nice, I think people would like to know, and not, I mean, if we could have a good discussion and go over it on Monday, so that when we meet on Tuesday and it's presented in the budget, we can, we.
Yeah, we're happy, we're happy to do that, but I just want to have the big, bold, that everything is estimated at this point.
Right, because.
Because we haven't set assessments, we haven't been certified on that, we haven't finished local receipts.
We don't know what, if, what, where the number's going to be. Governor's budget is usually the, in this time, is the safest number.
So we're, we're using all of our projections with everything that we know as of, we keep checking the website and changing things and changing things right up to. We can do that on Monday. Certainly, we have no problem doing that. I'm writing as we finish sections, so I'm hoping that you can have your budget books for the weekend. Where you would have that information.
And the reserve accounts too.
Oh, yeah, that's included in the budget book.
And reserve accounts and stabilization.
They're all in, all presented in the budget book. But again, when we present those balances, they're probably, I think we use the day, we just ran them as of May thirty-first. So we're still, we're in, we're still not done with this fiscal year.
I, and I understand that, and so has every time that's had to improve their budget across the state, many of, some of whom did it in March and April, so. I, I think it's still good to have an idea of all that and I'm, I mean, I don't know. I don't know how others feel about meeting and discussing it on Monday or not, but also.
It sounds great.
I would ask that we make it a six-thirty meeting just because of the planning board at six.
Do you think planning board's going to be done?
I have no idea.
Or maybe you can, if there's already a quorum established, you can miss planning board.
Um, yeah.
I was being funny, I guess that was.
I'll look at it and have an answer for him. I'll let him, I'll let.
We can look at it, see what time marks further on.
Yeah.
With that, I have a question. With, with all that, is there also going to be included a draft of the capital improvement or as well?
Yeah, just like every year, every year in the budget, since I've been here, there has been a draft in our budget book.
Just wanted to reiterate, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing that. Seeing done, a motion to adjourn is in order?
I move to adjourn.
Do we have something?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.